In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, Amen. Dear God, save thy people and bless thy inheritance and grant victory to your people over their adversaries, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, Amen.
Let's lead us to a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Yes, Mayor. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or a certain member of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in a discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
No, sir.
Nope.
No.
No.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Moving on to citizen communication, we have citizen communication.
Yes, Mayor. Our first one is Mr. Julio Gudrow, and he wants to speak regarding the U.S. tournaments at HEB Tennis Center.
And you're going to be calling him?
Uh, no, he should be present. Mr. Gudrow?
It says, yes, would you like to be called? On your...
Okay. I guess he's not present.
Unless he is Mr. Gudrow?
No?
No, I think, yeah, he designated to be called.
Hello, Julio Gudrow speaking?
Hello, sir, this is Melinda, Assistant City Secretary for the City of Harlingen. I had to done as a public comment that you wanted to discuss the USA tournaments at HEB Tennis Center.
Yes, what about them?
Okay, so did you want to go ahead and speak on it?
Uh, with regard, I'm sorry, can you say again what this is regard?
Uh, it's for the city commission meeting for the City of Harlingen. You had submitted a public comment that you would like to comment on the USTA tournaments at HEB?
Uh, yes. Uh, we're very pleased with our partnership with Bianca Reeves and running the events at the HEB Center in Harlingen. We are so pleased with it that for next year, we have granted, she requested 12 events, and we are granting all 12.
Okay.
And I probably will be reaching out to her to see if she'll be willing to take on a few more.
Okay.
So I think that that speaks loudly to our satisfaction with what she's done, how she runs the events, how she deals with us, and all the complexities that the events bring along. To this date, she's ran many events for us at that facility. We have received zero complaints, and that is extremely difficult to accomplish when you look at the amount of people that she deals with during any of the events.
Okay.
Is there any questions you have that you would like to ask that I can address?
No, sir, not at this time. We just wanted to just hear you on your comment.
Great. Well, thank you, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you so very much, Mr. Gudrow. You have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you, bye-bye. Okay, the second one is Ms. Eva Chips, and also with the HEB Tennis Center. Ms. Chips?
Please state your name and address or district.
My name is Eva Chips, and my address is 815 East Buchanan, Harlingen, Texas. Good afternoon, my name is Eva Chips. I'm the Vice President of the nonprofit Harlingen Area Tennis Association, an avid tennis player and advocate. Our association was very involved in building the HEB Tennis Center in Pendleton Park with the purpose of growing our tennis community in the Rio Grande Valley. Many of our association members volunteer hours and hours to make this center a reality. As an association, Harlingen Area Tennis Association is invested in promoting the center and expanding tennis opportunities farther in our community. We want to make tennis fun and affordable for all. In advocating for the efforts of our association, President Bianca Reeves to continue our mission to bring tennis to everyone who wants to learn and play at the HEB Tennis Center, a community we help build. The issue to address is that the tennis instructor assigned to the HEB Tennis Center is blindly not allowing our association to continue promote and use the facility to host free clinics, classes, and share equipment. Bianca Reeves has denied access to the courts, space, and equipment necessary to instruct, practice, and play tennis and host tournaments. Bianca Reeves is a certified USTPA tennis instructor and USTA tournament director. She has worked tirelessly to get and maintain founding for Harlingen Tennis to host tournaments and clinics at the HEB Tennis Center. She is a pillar in our tennis community. Her efforts have brought more foot traffic to the center, generating attention and goodwill for tennis Harlingen. Our association supports her. Now we ask that you do too. There is plenty of ability at the Harlingen HEB Tennis Center to support both the tennis pro and our efforts to continue to grow and generate interest in our sport in our town. Please work with us and Bianca to resolve this in pace we have come to. Let's work together to create a new policy with clear directives that anyone who wants to use the center can follow. Let's allow groups such as ours to safely conduct clinics, tournaments, hold practice, and play at the center. It's time to take Harlingen HEB Tennis Center to the next level and increase access and equity in how to use it. Let's continue to make ours for a priority for all and affordable for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chips.
Okay, the next one, we have two young ladies, Ms. Emma Inojosa and Ms. Adele Marie Solis, wanting to comment on the HEB Tennis Center as well, along with their parents, Ms. Adele Clinton.
Hi there.
Hi.
What is your name?
My name is Emma.
And your sister?
Oh, this is my friend.
Your friend? What is your friend's name?
Adele.
Adele. Well, thank you for being here. You can speak.
My brother and I have been in tennis with Ms. Bianca for more than a year. We want Ms. Bianca as our coach because she is amazing and kind. She is also very helpful. She was made, she has made me a better tennis player. She helped me and many other kids become our best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Go ahead.
I am Adele Marie Solis, and I am eight years old. I have been Ms. Bianca's student since I was six. Since then, I have become a great tennis player, all because of Ms. Bianca. She is so patient and kind. She makes it so much fun for me. All of the kids love going to her lessons. I love how she gives us the courage to play our best all the time. Please, can you let Ms. Bianca teach at the Tennis Center? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I just want to say that both of you are excellent tennis players and readers. I am so impressed.
Okay, Mayor, the next one is Ms. Diana Eichardt, and she wants me to go ahead and read her statement, and it's regarding the Harlingen Tennis Association. Forty years ago, my tennis-playing family moved to Harlingen through an event sponsored by the Harlingen Area Teachers Tennis Association, HATA. We were introduced to local tennis players who became lifelong friends. Over the years, I have served several terms on their board. In the early days, HATA brought the pros to the courts and held fundraising events to subsidize their income. It was HATA who promoted a contract between a pro and the city for continuity of management. It was HATA who brought USTA sanctioned leagues to the valley. HATA is the last two years has brought junior sanctioned tournaments to HEB. It is disheartening that the city no longer wishes to partner with this longstanding nonprofit community organization. And that's all she stated. Okay, and now we have Mr. Rondozano, topic T O M A.
Good afternoon. A pro se defendant today in response to a judge's inquiry of whether he wanted to keep his personal property answered no. She pursued the topic of whom he wanted his clothes to go to, but he again negated any desire to keep the clothes that he had on. Eventually, he understood the inquiry and did want to keep his clothing. A block away from right here, there's a political billboard, and it states that transparency is a main feature of it. Our boards now start, as you noticed right now, our meetings with a transparent financial query with which each member must correspond. But more relevant to the citizenry is to know that their tax monies are spent, how they're being spent by elected officials. If Harlingen pursues, of course, a circumvention of open meetings regulations, the bitter taste of those circumvented easily can bound into a suspicion that something foul or corrupt is about. Don't do pseudo-transparency. Be a full-fledged American in case an undressed emperor pulls a wilt over us. And finally, I do want to add that I think there's some golfers here, and there's a lot of emphasis on winter Texans. Well, they're usually here for about three months. We should have a three-month membership-type feature. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rondozano.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, and I believe Ms. Solis wanted to go ahead and speak on regards to the Tennis Center as well. She was with a young lady.
Hi. My name is Adele Clinton Solis, and I live at 2625 Clifford Street. Today, I'm not addressing the commission as the Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I come here as a citizen, as a tennis player, and as a concerned parent. I want to call to your attention a matter at the HEB Tennis Center located at Pendleton Park. Many people in Harlingen and the surrounding community, including myself and my children, you met my daughter earlier, were taking very affordable group classes, lessons, and participating in tournaments there until about a month ago, when Ms. Bianca Reeves was asked to leave the Tennis Center and told she no longer had a business inside the pro shop and that she wasn't allowed to teach lessons. My children were devastated, and we received no notice whatsoever. Up until that day, I've been at the Tennis Center many times each week. I'd like you to know that in the year and a half that I've known Ms. Reeves, besides her passion for tennis, I've personally witnessed her strong work ethic, her friendly attitude, and amazing coaching skills. In the adult classes, she is motivational and so friendly to adults coming out of their comfort zone to try something brand new. She encourages us to work hard, yet is friendly, and makes the classes fun. But her true passion comes out in the children's classes. The kids adore her, and she is so great with them. Some are as young as four years old. I've personally witnessed her coach a young girl with autism. The girl's mother told me she'd never let anyone coach her before, but she feels at ease with Bianca and looks forward to her lesson each week. I've been a proud resident of Harlingen for 15 years, and I've never, in those 15 years, seen so much activity at the Pendleton Tennis Courts as in the last year and a half that Bianca has been there. My ask is a very simple one. Ms. Reeves is an asset to the City of Harlingen, and I implore you to look into this matter and allow her to return to the Tennis Center to run tournaments and allot her just two or three of the 14 tennis courts at the center. In such a short time, she's put Harlingen on the map statewide, as you can tell by the gentleman what he said from USTA. She's put Harlingen on the map statewide for tennis, and momentum shouldn't be lost now. I thank you tremendously for your service to Harlingen and for allowing me to share my insight, and I'm available at your convenience should you like to discuss this matter or have any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And now we have Ms. Michelle Chiral, topic as well as HEB Tennis Center.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Chiral, and I live at 1414 Cardinal Drive. I've been a resident of Harlingen for 12 years, but I've lived in the valley most of my life. I was introduced to the HEB Tennis Center about 20 years ago, when my eldest son turned 10, and we were looking for a summer activity for all three of my kids. Through the HEB Tennis Center, Don Van Ramshorst offered a summer clinic, Monday through Thursday, 9 to 12, and all my kids started playing tennis at an early age, just like these young ladies before you today. They really got into the sport. We traveled all over the state of Texas to take them to the USTA tournaments that Bianca has brought to Harlingen these past few months, and they also were part of a very rigorous tennis program at the high school. All three of them continued to play. My son got so good that he was able to play tennis in college. So basically, what I'm trying to say is it's so important to get kids started early because it can make a big impact on their life. I, too, am an avid tennis player. I play three times a week. I'm part of a USTA league. We play in Brownsville, Harlingen, and McAllen, and these teams also come to our pro shop, and they were so excited to see the new facility that we built with all the merchandise and all that, and then now it's all gone. I am the Secretary of the Harlingen Area Tennis Association, which is a nonprofit organization whose main goal is to grow tennis in our community. We have been trying to hold a community event once a month to promote health and well-being. Over the years, I've seen many changes take place from the new courts that were built in 2010, and of course, we were all so excited when the new pro shop was built and opened in December 2021. Through Bianca, as Mr. Gudrow mentioned, she has brought USTA tournaments. We also have the potential to host college tournaments and even tournaments of the pro circuit tour. There is a pro circuit tournament going on right now as we speak at the Harlingen Country Club, and our Tennis Center has that potential as well. Bianca Reeves has been Don Van Ramshorst's assistant since December 2020, and then she was recently asked to step down at September 2022. Besides assisting him and running several programs, she has brought many and hosted several USTA junior tournaments. She also held two UTR tournaments, which brought a level of play to Harlingen that we do not typically see. My eldest son, who got to play college tennis, was thrilled to be a part of that tournament. This past May, our association was awarded a $1,500 grant that we used to promote tennis in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor, the next one is for Ms. Monica Wing, and she would like for me to read her statement as well. This is regarding sidewalks on Taft Avenue and the subdivision on Coakley Estates. Taft Avenue across Commerce Avenue up to F, east to west, up to Expressway Frontage close to East Taft Avenue. There are two schools, Sam Houston Elementary and Coakley Middle School, and the entrance to the World Birding Center. In line with Commerce Avenue by the railroad tracks and on Taft Avenue, there is routine median traffic, but during school hours, traffic increases due to cars entering and exiting the schools, which can cause risks. Sidewalks are needed for pedestrians to walk to avoid accidents. Pedestrians walk on the grass street around the mailboxes due to the vehicles parked in the street. On Tuesdays and Fridays, it gets more complicated due to trash cans on the street, which makes matters worse for the handicapped people. There is an individual using the street in a wheelchair. On West Taft Avenue, there are incomplete sidewalks, which are old, broken, and grown weeds. There are no exit ramps. The railroad tracks are higher on Commerce Street than Taft Avenue. It appears that there is a major risk because of a blind spot to the incoming traffic. On the side of the railroad, there are no sidewalks, and it's full of rocks, and it's hard to walk on. Coakley Estates Phase One was built over 20 years. During this time, the traffic has increased considerable and also the risk of accidents. The construction of Coakley Estates Subdivision Phase Two is about to start, and with this, it's anticipated that the traffic and risk will increase for the citizens of Harlingen. The reason that sidewalks are so important is to reduce risks of accidents and allow people to walk safely. I am requesting to the Commission of the City of Harlingen to consider the safety and concern of these situations. I am making this request as a resident, as residents of this area and concerned citizen. We ask that the city consider doing these improvements with the 5 million federal grant funds. I'm requesting your evaluation of benefits versus risks for Taft Avenue. And that was from Ms. Monica Wing. Next would be Mr. Desi Martinez. Topic is subdivision ordinance. Mr. Martinez?
Hi. Desi Martinez, 1806, Haverford. It's hard to follow such a wonderful presentation from our future chairman. I'm here because of subdivision ordinance and the step one you all taken tonight in favor of that modification you all doing on the subdivision ordinance, but it's missing other things. And I hope, and I came out of during COVID to try and talk to the planning zoning, they didn't listen, and here we are. It's because we've been helping the family try to get a building permit for the last almost two years. An area annexed on FM 507 there by the airport going north, when we annexed in 2006, 2006, that area, and didn't do our proper planning of how it's going to affect people, their land, their future. And being a big proponent of property rights, I thought I'd come here. We've gone through a lot. In fact, we even met with the mayor, we've gone through East Rio Honda Water Supply Corporation, blah, blah, blah. But here's the problem. Bottom line is, when we annexed that area in a CNN jurisdiction of a rural water supply corporation, they have certain rules as well. That rule is that anybody developing a subdivision has to move the water lines and an FM farm-to-market road. And we have a lot of farm-to-market roads around our city, east, west, and now south, hallway to Military Highway almost. And we have not done our true analysis of and developing this subdivision, because if you look in the definition, there's no Webster, now it's Yahoo. A subdivision is a development and division of a lot, tract, or parcel of land into two or more lots, plats, sites, or otherwise for the purpose of establishing or creating subdivision, a subdivision through sale, lease, or building development. That's the American definition in simple language of a subdivision. An individual building a home and a lot, one acre or more, is not a subdivision according to American standard. But here, we do have it. And as a result, when they tried to get, we went through all the challenges through here, and as a result, when they went to get a permit or their water meter, they said, no, we can't give you a water meter in East Rio Honda Water Supply Corporation. That you all, not you all, your prior...
Three minutes, Mr. Martinez.
Because you gotta pay $9,000 now to move the whole water line on that FM 507. Please fix that. Put single-family housing into single-family housing as America does in its definition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
This concludes our citizen communication. May I?
Thank you, Melinda. All right, moving on to the presentations, we have the Rio Grande Valley Hispanic Genealogical Society, month, October 19, 2022. Whereas the Rio Grande Valley Hispanic Genealogical Society started with a small group of people wanting to get together to compare and share genealogical information, and we are now going to take this group into charge of the Texas Genealogical Society of Harlingen and specialize in Hispanic research. And in 2010, the group incorporated and evolved into an independent society whose members are enthusiastically sharing and researching their family histories. And whereas the Rio Grande Valley Hispanic Genealogical Society is a nonprofit organization interested in promoting genealogy, preserving and protecting all genealogical records, acquiring resources for the genealogical community, and specializes in Hispanic research and offers to help all those who are interested in searching for ancestors. And whereas the Rio Grande Valley Hispanic Society hosts monthly educational programs, conducts beginning genealogy classes, sponsors seminars and conferences, provides speakers to community groups, and individuals do not have to be of Hispanic origin to receive the society's services. And whereas the Rio Grande Valley Hispanic Genealogical Society has completed the following projects: transcribed the Harlingen City Cemetery, conducted cemetery tours, purchased genealogy books for the Harlingen Public Library, indexed Cameron County and Northern Mexico records, and published several books, including one of family stories and award winner, our heroes, Hispanic veterans of the Rio Grande Valley, and will soon be publishing the sequel. The society also publishes an annual journal and a quarterly newsletter. And whereas the Rio Grande Valley Hispanic Society encourages Hispanics to participate and get involved in community organizations and projects, and hosted the 40... and hosted the 41st Annual Texas State Hispanic Genealogical and Historical Conference, October 14 through the 16th, 2021, in South Padre Island, Texas. Now therefore, be it resolved that Ahén Norma Secundera, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, on behalf of the city commission, will hereby proclaim October 19, 2022 as Rio Grande Valley Hispanic Genealogical Society. So thank you so much for all of your hard work. I do, I do. As long as there's hard work. Okay. Moving on to a presentation by CMG Hive Smart City Development.
Good afternoon, City Commission. Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive. Um, we're gonna, we put together a presentation. We've met with some, with the city manager and emailed the presentation to the commissioners, to the mayor and stuff. Uh, this is a good opportunity. We just want to give a short presentation. Um, my executive development manager here is going to go ahead and go through it. And I do have the president of the company, my partner, and the vice president, Dora, and Joseph are going to be in on the Zoom meeting as well. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Zach so we can move forward.
Hello, how are you all? I'm Zachary Zondol. Uh, we're here today to bring you a smart city concept with using smart Wi-Fi and data analytics. So it's looking to build your smart city. On today's agenda, we have what is a smart city? Design plus deployment, data collection and management, maintenance, community impact, and funding. Uh, smart city. Smart city makes data-driven decisions, increases transparency with the public connectivity, custom alerts for flooding program to reach the officials who need to know, custom alerts to help to protect your public spaces for vandalism, creative solutions to real-life problems. And actually, if you, right here, that would be a splash page, a custom splash page. And then, design and plus deployment. Uh, we work with you and focus on your goals for raw data and collections. Our engineers will design a network suited to your needs. Our proprietary software provides additional levels of security. Our presence analytics are designed to keep you informed, real-time information and alerts. Our outdoor deployment provides protected internet connectivity to public spaces. Network can be deployed in a short span of time and is opposed to months. Data collection plus management. We use the latest technology to collect raw data sets from any environment. We pull raw data in multiple sources. We have access to custom-built dashboard that pulls in data sets from multiple sources and makes it easy to read and understand. We manage a system with you to avoid adding work to your IT departments. Example, monitor water levels, water quality, air quality, pedestrian vehicle traffic patterns. Uh, use, uh, use that and use that data to make informed decisions. Maintenance. Five years of maintenance is included with all our packages. If any hardware needs attention, our team is on it. Our team will ensure that hardware components are well-protected against the elements. Our internal systems will notify us of network issues. Uh, community impact. Our proprietary software allows you to collect more revenue for your city. Partnering with corporations through corporate sponsorships with strategically placed, non-invasive ad placement on splash pages, your city benefits from additional recurring revenue. We match you with corporate sponsors to bring business expansions to your city and work with corporations to increase investments in Harlingen's future through educational and technological initiatives. And a quick summary, we collect the data you need, make decisions based on hard data, understand your data with ease, analyze information with ease. Custom design and alerts, custom alerts tailored to your needs, recurring revenue for Harlingen. And disregard that, that was from the template. Uh, fast deployment, installation with minimal and digging. And, uh, community, engaging the community and stay connected. And then, uh, these are contacts. And, uh, we have the, uh, the owners of CMG Hive on. If there's any questions or anything that, uh, that you all have in mind, please feel free to ask.
Hello, everyone.
Does anyone have any questions?
We actually have a short video that was in slide number two. Do you want to display that really quick?
On slide two?
Yes, in the corner, there's a, there's a replay button.
I'm not getting anything on my end.
My apologies, slide three.
Hmm.
The one that has the builder's smart city, the picture, this.
There you go. Ready for that, ready for that. There you go.
On the bottom left-hand corner, there should be a play button.
Very good. It has no noise, but we do take care of the connectivity of all forms, community development, including internships on every university, security and surveillance, of course, flooding management, um, water management, including traffic and pedestrian data, air pollution monitoring, including noise monitoring, asset tracking, data and analytics, of course, pilot programs for new technologies, green energy. Course consultation and studies ongoing, plus additional revenue for the city of Harlingen and custom development as we go with our proprietary software, which will collect raw data with our custom solutions in the future, you see, guys. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, multiple.
Right, let's hear it.
I see you have DNB. Uh, what are your DNB numbers?
DNB?
Dunn and Bradstreet.
We just recently acquired our Dunn's number. So we're actually a startup company, we're a startup tech company.
Okay, well, I, I type in your name, and it says DNB, and I click on it, and I don't pay money to DNB, so I was just wondering what their ratings of you are.
Right, we're a startup, like I said, we're a startup tech company. Um, we just acquired our Dunn's number.
Okay, and define startup. How old are you?
Startup, we're about a year old, but we've been in the tech space for more than 10 years.
And you have a life insurance company, a property casualty?
We do, we are insured for, um, over what was required for what we do. Um, at the core of it, we are a tech startup company, as we said. We've been in development for about the last five years. And so the software that we own is part of that, we rolled in and absolutely.
And are you PNC or Group One with your insurance?
I would have to check on that, but I can get back to you.
And have you done this anyplace else?
Um, no, not yet, but this technology is available in other parts of the world, including the US. So however, what makes this different is the fact that it's custom-developed.
And what would this cost, initial cost for the City of Harlingen?
Well, it depends on your needs. So we're talking about, you know, covering the whole city or parts of the city. So it's going to be done in phases. So it just really depends on the hardware and the custom development and the work behind that. However, funding with that is provided by corporate sponsorships and corporate relationships, including foundational grants, federal, state, and global grants. As, um, so, uh, pretty much it's limitless when it comes to funding.
And so I, I'm guessing this is multiple millions to initiate.
Of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How soon could we get a return on investment if we were to go that route?
Well, so we put this in phases. So if you want to put, uh, for example, if we start with 100 access points, that will cover, let's say, most of the city spaces. Um, primarily, I think, I think it's about, what, 42, 44 square miles, which is Harlingen. So that's about maybe 300 to 400 APs. Um, if anything, just starting is around 3.5 million. But again, we can see that coming in with grants and plus partnerships with, uh, with, with brands within six to 12 months.
Right, and once that cost has been fully covered, as, you know, we've discussed in different meetings with members from different parts of Harlingen, City of Harlingen, what would happen is we're, we're looking for an initial commitment that is not the full price, let's say it that way. So it's something that we can negotiate on. And then, uh, starting off from a point that makes sense for everyone, the sponsors and grant funds would cover the rest of the cost to make it fully funded. Uh, moving from there, once the project is fully funded and deployed, all the revenue that comes after that, uh, we would do an 80/20 split with the City of Harlingen. So the City of Harlingen would keep 80% of ad revenue that is produced year over year.
Right, these licenses are up to five years.
Are there any other questions from the commission?
No.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Um, item number three is the consent agenda. We have items A through M. Do we have a motion to approve?
We have two minutes, ma'am. Number two, minutes.
Whoops, sorry. I just passed right on over that. Um, item number two, approval of minutes. Do you have a motion to approve minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Item number three, consent agenda for items number A, uh, items A through M.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Onto new business. Item number four is presentation and update on the Eagle Scout project by Ethan Honendell. Is that right?
Honendell.
Honendell. Cemetery veterans grave marking and mapping project on F Street.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Commission. We generally bring these items to you all in the initial phase of it, um, when they're requesting to do the improvements in, uh, in, on city property. But this one is, is a little bit different. And so we wanted to, um, share what, what his accomplishments have been. Uh, so Ethan Honendell is, is currently a Boy Scout with Troop 1701, and he's applying for his Eagle Scout ranking. And so his project was to, um, map the city cemetery with all the, um, military veterans that were buried at the cemetery and create a, um, sort of a data, um, collection of it and then create a map. And so he's, he's, uh, has it with him right now. But I'm going to turn it over to him so he can do his, um, uh, we have a little PowerPoint that he, um, created and kind of show you what he's, what he's done and what he's accomplished with it.
Hello, I'm Boy Scout Ethan Honendell. I worked on my Eagle Scout project in F Street Cemetery or Harlingen City Cemetery. I gathered around a group of scouts who could help me comb the cemetery for any veteran that perhaps hadn't been marked or that, uh, we needed to add to the lot and plot. Once we had the lot and plot, we then updated it with all the locations. Because it's before my project, we had the names so we could identify who was a veteran, which some were not marked, so we added them as well. And then, once we had that, we added the H27. Smaller version of my map. Uh, you can see that there, well, I guess you can't. Right here, we have, for instance, E20, E28, we have the sections on my map, which this is all posted inside the cemetery at the entrance. We are able to look at the location that they're in. So we can go to plot E28, we can go to E28, which is right here. And then, we can then look for his number, which is 23. We now know he is right there inside the cemetery. These are all veterans, so that way during events like Race Across America, we are able to locate and honor these veterans that at the time we were not able to locate. Um, we also put a head, uh, American flag at the top left hand of all the veterans inside the cemetery, so that way you can cross-reference inside the cemetery and assign, the sign that's in the cemetery. So that way we are able to, if you're just roaming the cemetery and perhaps not even looking for a veteran, you can, uh, authenticate which one is a veteran on site. Do you not recognize it? Oh, sorry.
Wow. Outstanding work, Ethan. I think everyone here is incredibly impressed. Um, how long did it take you to do all of this?
Two years.
Two years, wow. How old are you?
Um, 17 as of October 1st.
Well, happy birthday.
Thanks.
And what an incredible accomplishment.
I'm curious.
What you have done will serve the City of Harlingen, the families of these veterans for, for a lifetime. So it's, it's truly incredible. I, I am blown away by you and your dedication. Two years is, is a lot, especially when you're 15, right? Well, thank you so much. Did anybody have any?
If I may, yes, ma'am. Uh, Ford Kinsey, Commissioner, retired sergeant major, former president of Keep Harlingen Beautiful. Back in the day, we used to do two cemetery cleanups out there each year, one before Veterans Day, one before Memorial Day. And every time we would be out there, I'd say, man, this is something we need to do. And God bless your brother for taking care of it. Because I mean, as a veteran, and speaking for the others on the commission that are, I mean, this is a huge deal. Uh, that, that cemetery has been in existence, and Harlingen has been here. I mean, the history that's out there is incredible. If you've never been out there and walked around, you need to. Uh, but well done, Buck, well done.
I'm curious, did you, because I know when I was there, last, last time I was there, I was, you know, I was walking around, and I saw one of the veterans, he was from the Spanish-American War. Did you find anybody older than that?
I don't believe so.
Well, you know, as Commissioner number one, Commissioner number three, and Commissioner number five were veterans. So I, and my family and all, so I'm, I'm just tickled pink. And, and I'm just, you're going to go places. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think you deserve a standing ovation.
Good job, Mom.
Yes, good job, Mom. Thank you, Ethan.
Not to take anything away from his brother, his brother had a project about two years ago, three years ago, uh, for Pendleton Park. But when we were meeting after the project was complete, I told him that this is a huge tool for us, a huge resource. Uh, it'll help us out with many families that come to looking for their, their loved ones. And so when he showed us what he did, it was, that's why I wanted to present this to you all, to show you the hard work that he did. And it's going to be a tremendous tool for us in the city, so.
Amazing.
Thank you.
Good job. Three something. The one that was in the cemetery is a different one. We also like to present you this, uh.
Oh, thank you.
So that way it can be posted in the City of Harlingen, and we're also giving one to the library, which is over there. to the library, which is over there, so that way, because when we were looking for it, there is a year of legwork. And so, we thought that we would go and give everyone the resources that we wish we had in the place that we first looked.
Wonderful.
He turned over all the information, all the data, every, all the work that he's done to us on a thumb drive, and so we have access to it, we can put it on our website. It's just, it's, I, it's really hard to express.
Phenomenal.
The work that he's done for us, so.
You have to create some of these as brochures to hand out from your office, because this is a great, uh, brochure to give to people looking for somebody.
Definitely.
He has his hearing for his scout award next week.
Well, thank you again. How neat. Okay, item number five, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to reject the bid of pumps, motors, and controls and award a contract to Pump Mechanical Technical Services LLC under bid number twenty-two-two-dash-eighteen, new pump station and skid for the Tony Butler Golf Course. Craig?
Tough act to follow.
I know. Just sit down.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Craig Cook, I'm the Assistant City Manager for External Services. The replacement of the one main water pump and improvements to the piping system was originally included in the major renovation project at the golf course. I'm sure you recall, we received one bid, which was too high, we rejected it. Um, but, uh, that project was put on hold, but the, uh, pump system continued to deteriorate and caused us to advertise for bids for the replacement of the pump and the skid and associated system improvements. The four B board, the funding entity for the renovation project and for this piece of it, uh, was briefed on this September nineteenth of this year. Bid number twenty-two-two-dash-eighteen was advertised in early August with bids due on the twenty-third of August. Two bids were received, Pump Motors and Controls, Inc., PMC, and Pump Mechanical Technical Services, PMTS. Ben McCam, uh, McCambell is the technical designer, and he's in the room right there, of the irrigation, uh, system. He did a technical review of both bids, uh, and I and others did a commercial review, a, a procurement review. In bids, in Ben's, uh, review of, uh, PMC, I don't want to get them confused, of PMC, uh, he found that it was deficient in two ways. Uh, it did not provide the Z pipe, which was expressly required by Amendment One to the, uh, RFP, uh, nor the building modifications or repairs needed for the building to get the pump actually into the pump house. It also had a clause that required the city to provide, uh, equipment and personnel to load and unload the pump, and we don't have equipment or personnel to do that. So in light of those two deficiencies, the city, uh, considers the bid of PMC as non-responsive, and it should be rejected by procurement practice. Ben's review of the bid of PMTS is found to be technically superior, and in fact, more thorough than PMC's. It provides several betterments, including extended warranty, larger pipes, a little more thought and expr, and, uh, description of the work entailed. Uh, so we, uh, the staff recommends that the council reject the bid of PMC and award the contract to PMTS in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars. Again, this is a piece of the renovation project, so roughly three-hundred thousand of the three-point-one million that the four B board provided, uh, many months ago.
Thank you, Craig. Do we have any questions? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Who is the second?
Right here, right there.
Just because it's very difficult, right? Over here.
It was in concert.
Everyone but me.
Okay. Commissioner Pettis?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
And consideration and possible action to reduce the speed limit from thirty-five miles per hour to thirty miles per hour on Rio Honda Road from Seventh Street to Thirteenth Street.
Again, this is Craig Cook, I'm the Assistant City Manager for External Services. Rio Honda Road is a minor arterial from Seventh Street all the way to Loop Four-Ninety-nine. Uh, in accordance with the City of Harlingen Long Range Thoroughfare Plan of May two-thousand thirteen, a speed hump has been requested in the ten-hundred block of Rio Honda by Commissioners Kinsley and Morales on September twenty-first of this year. The speed hump ordinance requires that, uh, speed humps be in residential areas on streets with thirty mile-an-hour speed limits, and that's why we're here tonight asking for that change. It also requires, um, that streets not be on the long-range thoroughfare plan. Um, I submit, we'll, we'll review that as part of the speed hump data analysis that the city engineer and I do, uh, before we approve the installation of the speed hump. So we just, at this point, we're just asking that the speed limit be, be reduced to thirty miles an hour from Seventh to Thirteenth Street, about a third of the whole length, but, uh, it's an entire, entirely a residential area from Seventh to Thirteenth.
And will there be proper signage to alert people that there's a change in the speed limit?
Uh, yes, there, there are signs at each end of the, of those two streets that will change out. They, they say thirty-five now, we'll change them out to thirty. Uh, and, and of course, the speed hump gets two signs that say, "Speed hump."
Is this in response to the, um, town hall that you, that you held, listening session?
Yes, it is.
Okay, wonderful.
Because I'm, I'm just guessing it's a raceway right now.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, the, the picture, you can see it's, it's two nice, uh, nicely wide traffic lanes, and then parallel parking on either side, uh, in this area. But again, it's entirely residential, um, and we, we want folks to slow down a bit. And, and by the way, on the other side of Seventh Street, yes, on the other side of Seventh Street, the street changes its names for some unknown reason, but it's thirty in that area as well.
I think it's a great idea. Anybody have any questions? Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item number seven, consideration and possible action to approve changes to the twenty-two-two, twenty-three street improvement program previously approved by the City Commission on June first, two-thousand-and-twenty-two, based on the I, what is that?
I-Work.
I-Work Street Assessment, um, Craig.
Could I introduce myself? I'm Craig Cook.
You're here.
Just for the record.
It's a long echo in the row.
In case you forgot. Tonight I will first provide you some information regarding the status of current street improvement program, SIP lists, and our new street assessment software, and then seek your approval of a revision to one SIP list based on this new street assessment software, per the caption read by the mayor a moment ago. The presentation board over here, oop, over here, uh, is really for the public to review. Your packets contain all of the information on the board and more, so each little picture on the board you have as a page in your packet, along with the slides that I'm going through. As a reminder, uh, the street improvement program, SIP, is a four-year plan to provide improvement and reconstruction of the city street system. Improvements to streets are designed by the engineering department in one fiscal year, and then generally milled and paved in the following year by a construction contract. I've got three topics that are for your information, and then we will get to the, uh, request for approval of a minor change. Garrett Road is the last road to be improved from last year's SIP. The final phase, which is underway now, will be completed by Thanksgiving, I think a week or two before that, actually. This is the SIP list for the streets to be improved next year. Design will be completed this month, uh, bid in November and construction starting in January. Yes, it did take a little bit longer than we expected. I really expected to have this all done this summer, so we're three months behind that, that schedule, but we're, we're back on schedule. All of these streets will be mill, mill and pave, except Twenty-first and Twenty-and-a-half Streets, which will also include a little widening, several feet of widening of those two streets. All of these streets will be milled with, uh, with, milled and then repaved with two inches of asphalt. We will have contractor work on Monizuma, Summerfield, and Twenty-first Street first. They're all three in, uh, District One, up here in that little corner there. Uh, you will notice that, uh, we will bid Commerce Street from Fair Park to Tyler as a bid item, and will, uh, choose then to include it or not based on the budget. Uh, the restoration of Commerce is many years off. The five million dollar grant that we recently received, uh, will, uh, take over a year to just put in place from the Federal Highways Administration, and then probably two years to execute that plan, and then followed on by construction. The construction has to be funded and put on the, uh, TIP by the, uh, RGV MPO. All of that will take a lot of time. So if we can afford it, I think it's prudent that we go ahead and, and pave Commerce from Fair Park to Tyler, even though five years, ten years from now, it'll all look very different. This is a, a map with the purple highlights showing each street that's being, uh, as I say, designed right now, uh, bid next month, and constructed in early two-thousand-and-twenty-three.
Question on Commerce Street. Is that State Road or is that City?
City.
Yeah, it's considered an off-system, uh, street by the MPO. The MPO considers it an off-system road because it's.
Next, allow me to tell you about the street assessment software purchased in August from I-Work. We already use I-Work products in public works and public buildings, so we have confidence in their products. Each street was photographed and assessed block by block. So each little segment, uh, was assessed, we have forty-one-hundred of those segments. Each segment is assessed on a scale of zero to twenty, which estimates remaining service life, or RSL. A, a score, a, a rating of zero means zero life, a rating of twenty means twenty years of life remaining on that street. It also provides a recommended treatment, such as chip, uh, chip seal, pitching, patching, milling and overlay, and then rebuild thick overlay. The, uh, I-Works folks did not assess text dot roads, the, the state roads, only local roads. Uh, they did actually assess some areas outside of the city limits, way out here and way up here. They also, uh, did some public, uh, sorry, some private areas, um, trailer parks and such. It's better that they over-assessed than under-assessed. Two terms that I'll use often in this presentation are remaining service life, or RSL, and recommended This is the distribution by RSL of our forty-one-hundred street segments. Our average RSL is eight-point-one-one, which means more than eight years of life remaining on average. Twenty-five, twenty-five-point-four percent of our streets got a ten or higher, uh, rating, and therefore no maintenance is required. I'll, I'll address chip seals here in a moment. At the other end of the scale, we had eleven percent that were scored zero to four, and actually they only gave, uh, even numbers, so zero, two, or four. And all of those, uh, the recommended treatment is rebuild and thick overlay, like we're doing on Garrett Road. RSLs six and eight, which is the majority of our streets, sixty-three-plus percent of our streets, can be improved by pothole patching, crack sealing, and seal coating, all done by Public Works. The recommended treatments for RSLs six and eight, uh, also include milling and paving, which is a less dramatic and easier fix than this rebuild thick overlay like we did on Garrett. And most all of the streets that we have paved in recent years have been what, what I-Works calls mill and pave. Garrett and New Hampshire, uh, are the last two that were this thicker, more involved approach.
So the punchline is eleven percent of our streets?
Are hurting.
Thank you. And, and apply that to money.
And I have, and I have a solution for that problem.
Twenty-five million?
No, no. We'll get it all done in, really, we'll get it all done in the next three years. But you're jumping ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I get excited about road improvements.
I can tell. In your packets are three pages of street segment reports, so you can see the various RSLs and recommended treatments assigned by the software. And, and they're listed also, uh, here on the slide. Reports of streets requiring pothole patching, crack sealing, and seal coating will be given to Public Works to be performed by the street maintenance crews, they already do that kind of work anyway. And as you can see on the slide, the third bullet, each recommend, recommended treatment extends the RSL of the street segment by some number of years. So patching improves a street by some number of years, seal coating by another number. Apologies for the typo, oop, on the typo, right there. The city chooses not to chip seal. Text dot chip seals, they recently did five-oh-nine, uh, they've, I can tell they've done Business Seventy-seven, uh, that's where they put the chips down and rely on the tires to roll over the chips to put them down in the pavement. A messy ordeal. Uh, we choose not to do that. Um, but, we can't do the recommended treatment of rebuild and thick overlay in all cases because it's too expensive, it takes too long, ala Garrett Road. Uh, potential damage to underground utilities, which we did on Garrett Road, and it would exceed the annual street maintenance budgets, so we defer, uh, to mill and pave. This map is the basis of the poster map. The red lines are all roads that were rated zero to four, that eleven percent.
Quick question.
Yes.
I'm colorblind.
Ooh.
So, are there any in District Five?
Are there any?
Are there a lot in District Five?
Yes. One, uh, the little ones, that long one, and the two L shapes, and that road, and that road, and that road. We don't, we don't worry about little ones like this because it costs too much to mobilize, so we're looking for long, you know, longer pieces of road that we can patch. On the poster, the smaller map, uh, the black one, again, which you have in your packet, those roads were rated zero. They have no life left, uh, which was three percent of our total. The next two slides are blow-ups, if you will, detailed maps. This one is of the northern section of District Two. The following slide has sections, uh, sections of Districts Three and Four. The call-out boxes indicate streets already improved recently or plan to be improved in two-thousand-and-twenty-three or beyond. The approach used to draft initial SIP lists for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, uses the bullets here on the slide, uh, and, and apply them to all five districts. Grouping several segments of the same street includes streets in all five districts, maximize annual budgets, and roll streets to the next SIP if budgets are exceeded when we go out for bids. for bids. And here are District Three, a portion of District Three and a portion of District Four. Without benefit of detailed maps like these, District One improvements include Rio Hondo Road from Loop 499 to Academy Road, a net from 507 to North 25th Street and others. District Five improvements include Dilworth Road from the I-2 Frontage Road to Brenneman and South Palm Boulevard from Business 83 to Sun Country Drive. Given the streets that have been improved since August, when the assessment was done and the streets to be improved in 2023, a tentative potential S I P for 23, 24 is on the slide. Now, based on the iWorks assessment, this initial list of streets would be designed in late 23 and constructed in 2024. This addresses only segments rated zero to four, the red ones. This list is still tentative with much more engineering and cost estimating to do before we come to you for approval in late 2023 after the budget is established, the construction budget is established, and we know precisely what treatment will be given to each street. Similarly, this list is for 2024, 25. These streets will be designed in late 2024 and constructed in 2025. There are no zero to four rated streets remaining in District Five, hence there are no District Five streets on this list. However, if the budget allows, we could add Dilworth from Brenneman to Garrett Road or Hick Hill Road from Green J Court west to the city limits in District Five to balance the work across all five districts and be equitable.
And again, keep in mind, Commissioner, that this is just a tentative list. This is not, we're not going to vote on this tonight.
That's right. These streets were given R S Ls of six, the ones I just read off that could be added. That concludes the information portion of the presentation. Take a break. We're almost done. Now, we do need an approval. This is the S I P list for streets that you approved on June 1, 2022, as next year's S I P for design and estimating in early 23 and construction to begin in late 23. There have been a few situational changes since that approval, so we are requesting your approval of the following changes. Deleting Barcelona Avenue and Garrett Road east of Dixieland, which were rated eight out of 20 by iWork. Deleting Lamb Avenue because the apartment developer is, has agreed to construct that road for us, yay. Adding or including Seventh Street from Business 77 to East Austin, which is just an additional piece of Seventh Street, which was rated two out of 20 by iWork. And including Lozano Street, much of which was rated four out of 20 by iWork. Now, this actually reduces the total length and the, pardon me, the lane feet from the previous list that you approved, so that will help us maintain the established budget of 1.5 million, even though, you know, prices have gone up lately. So, staff recommends approval of this revised 2022, 2023 S I P for design and construction cost estimating by Engineering Department to begin in January 23, with construction to begin in late 2023. Thank you for your attention.
I had a question.
Yes.
Yeah. How do you, I mean, I understand the, how do you guys go like in order? Like in what order? Do you go like from top to bottom and that's how you start the streets or how do you, like when they actually like?
We leave that to the construction contractor, with the exception that I mentioned the construction we're going to start in January of this year, of next year. We're telling them to do Summerfield, Monizuma, and 21st Street first, quite frankly, because those residents on those streets have been waiting a long time. But generally, we leave it to the construction contractor so he can figure out how best to move his equipment from street to street.
So this iWorks program that the city has bought and you're using, it sounds like it's worth its weight in gold.
It is. It is. Now, we're gonna, we will have to do some maintenance to it, meaning updating the information.
Software.
When we, no, I mean, when we pave a street, we need to change that street's R S L. So, somebody, not me, somebody is going to have to do that administration of maintaining the software so that it gives good data. If we didn't do anything, the R S L of every street would just decrease by one each year. But of course, that's not what we're doing.
Craig, a question on slide 17. You bring up...
I only had 16 slides, Commissioner.
Okay.
Is it the next page?
Yeah, it's the 2021, 2022 Street Improvement Program Project, roadway candidates on there. Yeah. Towards the top, it talks about Comish, Commerce Street, Fair Park Boulevard, and Jackson Avenue.
Yes.
Has that already been done or is that what you're trying to say?
No.
I just wanted to...
Yeah, Commerce has what, like three pieces? Clifford has five or six. They're segments of that road. So we're doing, we're doing all of them. We just analyze them by segment.
Is there any way that we could add Commerce between Fair Park and Wilson Road?
Go north.
Specifically the southbound lane. The north side lane, you're not as bad, but southbound, whenever I'm coming down from Spanish Acres or secluded acres, I'm hitting every rut. It's ridiculous.
Somewhere along there, the county paved, and I think it's, they started paving recently just south of Wilson, like 180 something feet south of there. So you're talking about the gap.
Yeah.
From there to down to Fair Park.
Yes.
Again...
You just started?
No, no, they, you can just tell by driving on it that someone has repaved it recently and it wasn't us, it was the county. So you're talking about that gap.
Yeah, just from Wilson down to Fair Park.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't include that. Of course, this list you're talking about was determined several years ago without benefit of the software. I can look at what those, what that segment was rated and perhaps put it into one of these lists that are tentative, as the city manager correctly said, to add that to a later year.
Perfect. Appreciate it. But I figured if we're already mobilized to do from Jackson all the way to Fair Park, might as well just put it in with that year. You already have everything there, just keep going north.
Good point, but, you know, the budget is what the budget is, and when we get the bids, we may not be able to afford any of Commerce. I don't know. Let's get to that point in December when we open the bids and I come to you for approving that construction contract and see where we are.
Thank you.
Because Louise can add it by change order if we have money.
I love the advocacy for District Two.
I didn't know this.
Any other, any other questions for Craig? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Craig. Item number eight, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending Chapter 18, master fee schedule for the Harlingen Code of ordinances increasing the fees for green fees, carts, and memberships at Tony Butler Golf Course.
My name is Jeff Hart, and I'm the director of golf at Tony Butler Golf Course. I come to not, come to you this evening and ask on the behalf of the staff, the golf advisory board, and myself to raise the rates of green fee carts and memberships by approximately 30% at Tony Butler Golf Course. This won't be a very popular decision, and I mean, they're looking at me, but it's what needs to happen. And it's no, everybody knows the golf course has been running at a deficit for several, many years by there. What we're trying to do is basically get back to break even. Last year, we had 43,000 rounds of golf played. The PGA of America recommends that you have 30,000 rounds of golf played on your golf course to not have the people actually do damage to the golf course by too much play. So that's what they're suggesting, 30,000. We had 43,000 last year. Our expenses are about $1 million a year. We have been making a little over $800,000 in revenue every year. So what we did is we took the 43,000 rounds and we multiplied by the increase we had to come up with how much we needed to go in the increase to go to a break even point. We're still going to be lower than most of the golf courses in the valley, and so we'll still be of value to our people, to the winter taxes, and to our locals that play. We are a service, and I think that the city would be happy if we just break even and quit running this deficit. And I believe this is the right thing to raise the rates so that we can get to the break even point.
And the golf board did recommend approval.
Yes, unanimous decision that they approved it.
And you're still much lower than the other golf courses in our area.
Yes, we will, we'd be $36 for a green fee and cart. Los Lagos is 39. Everybody else is in the 40s or 50s. This is the nicer golf courses, the nicer 18-year-old golf courses that we compared to. Treasure Hills is $40 for a green fee and cart on the, and we're at 28 right now, so there's quite a bit of difference. We're asking to just raise it so we're still on the lower end, so we're still of value, but also we can not be, have the city supplement us anymore, that we make it so we can cover our own expenses.
You'll still have the low fee for the kids?
Yes, yes, I believe it, it's still going to be under $30 for a month of membership for the kids. The cost of everything has went up drastically. Fuel, for one thing, killed us last year.
Fertilizer costs.
Fertilizer went way up, too. Sand went way up. And we can't buy, we got an island here, but we can't buy sand except from Playtona, by San Antonio. That's the only people that make golf course sand, because it has to be really fine, fine, some top dressing sand has to be trucked all the way down from there.
And the course is looking really good, so I think it warrants...
It's good, and I think we, three years ago, we were not ready to go up on prices, even though we needed to make more money. The golf course was a good, it's got a long ways to go from where I'd like to see it, but we are much improved.
Any other questions?
Well, actually, I have a question for Gabe and our attorney. On these pricing, which I don't object at all, could we find a way to give him the leeway to reduce the prices on certain events or tournaments? So instead of, if he has a major event, which is going to be a father-son event, golf tournament or father and daughter event, instead of going with a full price, dropping it off by five bucks or so, so he can increase the foot traffic and have a potential more tournaments available to his, to the golf course?
We can, but not the way the ordinance is written right now. We'd have to come back in and make some changes to it to give him the leeway, but we're going to have to spell out under what circumstances he can actually adjust the rate and by how much. So we can do that, but right now, it's not, the ordinance doesn't allow him to do that. What I would suggest is that we approve the rates the way they are being recommended and that we come back with something that would address that issue that you just, you just raised. And I can work with Jeff and Craig on figuring out what the parameters for that might be and how to get that.
Is that something that you're needing, Jeff?
It would be nice to have Veterans Day, where we say Veterans Day special for all veterans, get Mother's Day. If you bring your mother to play, she gets a free green fee. I mean, stuff like that we could do. We've discussed this in the golf advisory board quite, we have a huge list of stuff like that that we could do. I mean, we've even talked about the weather temperature. If it's over 100 degrees, you got this much money off to try to get people to come out during the heat. We've got all kinds of ideas on that.
And there are some events like the Sundowners, where you may want to have a special rate after 3 o'clock or before 3 o'clock. And then for tournaments also, you may want to have the leeway to actually, if they purchase so much food and beverage, that it gives them the opportunity to raise, I'm sorry, to lower the rate by a certain dollar amount. So there's some, there's some, there's some leeway we can actually write into the ordinance, but we need some more time to do that.
Most of the area courses down here give a discount to the parks when they come out, and they give the discount based on how many people they have. So if they have 20 or more in a group, they give group discounts. They get 20 more in the group, they get a little bit lower price, and, you know, 40 or 50, you get even a little bit lower price than that. And everybody that I know of, Riverbend does it, Treasure Hills does it, most people have a park rate or a group rate, is what we call it, is what they're doing. And we get asked all the time, why don't we do that?
Well, we want to help you, of course, generate revenue and revenue, all revenue is good, right?
Right.
And so I think a great idea would be for you to put all those ideas down on paper on what best would serve the golf course, and since you've already discussed it with the board, and provide that to Craig, so that way we can work on it. But we want to, I would imagine, we want to prove this now so you can start making some more money.
Yes, ma'am.
Saving the taxpayers' money because we want to break even.
We're just trying to break even. I mean, we're a service for the city. I don't think we're really trying to make a profit. We're trying to be right there.
Sure. Got it. Wonderful.
Take it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Item number nine, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to change the street name of Champions Lane to Matty Lane, located east of Treasure Hills Boulevard and north of Bryan Drive.
Mayor City Commission, good evening. Javier Cervantes, Planning Director. We have an application to change the street name of Champions Lane to Matty Lane for this street right here. It's a residential street. Treasure Hills Boulevard is over here, and East Treasure Hills Boulevard is over here. This subdivision got recorded. So these are the lots that will get a new address. None of these lots have, they're all vacant, and there's no houses under construction, and nobody's having to change their address because all the, all the lots are vacant at this time. This is the recorded subdivision from 2015. It's been slow in developing, but there's new owners, so next year, there should be a lot of construction here, but they're requesting the street name change to Matty Lane. Part of the reason is we have a Champions Drive somewhere else in the city, so there's possible confusion with Champions Lane, and that's why they're requesting the street name change. We have a Champions Drive on Stewart Place, I'll show you a slide, it's over here, on Stewart Place Road, there's a Champions Drive here, and then we have a Champions Lane. And so it's possible confusion in case of an emergency, since there are no houses, nobody lives on this street, it's very easy to change the street name now, nobody's affected, and also the applicant will pay for the new street signs. Public hearing was conducted and no one spoke in opposition, and Planning and zoning commission recommended approval unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Javier. We'll now open it up for the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have any questions from the commission? Okay, we'll have attorney read the ordinance.
Yes, give me one second, please. I've got it. Before I got to it. An ordinance of the City of Harlingen to change the street name of Champions Lane to Matty Lane, located east of Treasure Hills Boulevard and north of Bryan Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing. Whereas in the renaming of the said street eliminates the duplication of Champion Street name in the city, whereas Planning and zoning commission, the City of Harlingen pursue it to Harlingen...
Anthony, you just need to read the caption.
Okay.
Not the entire ordinance.
Okay. Overly zealous.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 10, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading amending the City of Harlingen Code of ordinances, Chapter 1111, Article 18, Downtown City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter eleven-eleven, Article eighteen, Downtown District Overlay to remove Section one, Section one-eleven through five-oh-six alcohol regulations, providing for a savings clause and repealing any and all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, as you know, we have a downtown district overlay, which is part of the zoning ordinance. The intent of the, of the overlay district is to regulate construction, make sure that any renovations or new construction is in line with the architecture of the, of our beautiful downtown. In the ordinance, there's a section regarding alcohol regulations that do not really belong in this, in this ordinance. So we're asking that this section be removed since it doesn't, it doesn't belong. This went before PNC. No one spoke in opposition and they recommended approval unanimously.
Thank you, Javier. And we have a public hearing also for this item. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this ordinance? Having no one here to speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing and ask the attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending Harlingen City Code, Article eighteen, Downtown District Overlay, removing from the code Sections one-one-one-five-zero-six alcohol regulations, providing for a savings clause and repealing any and all ordinances or parts of the ordinances in conflict herewith.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Quick question.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Hey, Anthony, where would this normally go? This language. Louis said it shouldn't be in this ordinance. Where should it be? Where in the district overlay?
As far as this ordinance, I'm not sure about your district overlay. I'd have to look at that. So I can get back with you on that, but I don't have an answer for you right here, right now on that issue. He's saying that it shouldn't be in that, in that section.
That's what Luis is saying.
That's correct. And.
It shouldn't be in here.
Right. And I had not looked at this prior to this evening.
Sorry to catch you.
No, no, you, you've got me.
You're subbing in. I get it.
Mark agreed as well. I was at the PNC meeting and I went, and then they had it in executive session and Mark was saying that it had no business being on here and all that other stuff.
I don't know if you should say what's an executive session, but that's fine. My question is, so right now, if we approve this, I can go buy a Wharfley and go and drink downtown?
Well, it's going to require two readings, I think.
It would need two readings and you'd have to have it. But at this point, this would be the first reading. You've had your public hearing. So after your next reading or your consent agenda, it would be in place.
And the thing is that Mark is saying that you can actually do that now because this is really unenforceable. But it is on our, on our ordinances, so we need to get rid of it.
So you're saying we can't have this type of language? I'm just asking.
Well, not, not, not in this particular location. We can limit, in some cases, alcohol consumption, but the way it's written in this particular zoning ordinance, it shouldn't be there. So he says it needs to be taken out and.
Because it's supposed to be dealing with architecture and design guidelines. This is totally a separate issue.
And you don't know where it's supposed to be given?
We didn't, I didn't discuss that with Mark. And I, and I think at this point, I'm not sure that it needs to be addressed as far as not being able to consume alcohol outside unless the commission wants to have him look at that. But I think right now, he just needs to get this cleaned up.
So we already had a second, right? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item number eleven, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an advance funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation and represent the City of Harlingen in all matters related to the Arroyo Colorado Trail Phase Three Planning Project.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission. My name is Javier Mendez, Director of Parks and Recreation. This, this agenda item, we had applied for a grant to, to TechDOT through their MPO, through the RGV MPO. And we were awarded one hundred and forty-one thousand, five sixty-eight as part of the project. Our match is thirty-seven thousand, six thirty-two for a total cost of one seventy-nine, two hundred. And what this involves is it's a planning grant. And so it'll involve planning, design, and preliminary engineering of Phase Three. And so this, this section of trail will, will run from McKelvey to Hugh Ramsey along the Arroyo. It's approximately one point one miles. So as part of this grant, we have to execute an, an AFA. And so that's what we're presenting this evening for approval.
And Gabe, is this what had that deadline?
Yes, at the policy meeting. Yes, this was talked about at the policy. The date show Harlingen is not having signed one, but because we hadn't received it yet. And we just got this, I think, two weeks ago. This is going to be a great addition to the trail system once it get constructed.
There's an image of, so this is McKelvey Park and then this is Hugh Ramsey. So it'll go along the Arroyo.
You'll actually be able to go from Hugh Ramsey all the way to Dixieland pretty much. Do you know how many miles that is, maybe?
The total?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but you could even actually go from TSTC along Twenty-Fifth Street, hit Hugh Ramsey, and then when we connect, when we make this, construct this, this is one point one miles. The twenty, or the Meg Jordan is four point one miles. Right now, from McKelvey to Bogus is about three miles. And then we're extending it about one point six miles from Bogus to Dixieland. So whatever that totals.
But this study is just for this, just this little stretch?
Yes, sir.
And it's just for engineering and design?
Right.
It's not for construction?
So it's really a feasibility study kind of to see if it's feasible for us to construct this trail. And then after we get the design, then we would be able to apply for construction funds to be able to construct it.
So not having a calculator in front of me, just doing this in my head. So the Tech Lot's going to fund about seventy-five?
Yes, sir.
Seventy-five percent?
Seventy-five percent.
Okay. And then we do the twenty-five.
Actually, it's closer to twenty-seven percent, but we're closing it out.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item thirteen, I'm sorry, item twelve, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one-oh-nine subdivision, Article nine, updating the subdivision development guide, Section one-oh-nine through two-fifty, adoption of infrastructure standards by amending the stormwater design requirements, adjusting the requirements for testing, and updating the standards for curbing gutter, the, okay. Javier?
Yes, we had some discussion at the last meeting. So we regrouped and we came up with this new language. So basically, if the developer is proposing to widen the ditch, it's going to be a recommendation for, from PNC only. So it's going to be similar to a rezoning. PNC will make a recommendation. The City Commission will make the final decision. And so I believe that addresses all the concerns from the last meeting.
Let me just make sure I understand. So if they want to do the widening of the ditch, they will go before PNC and they will recommend yes or no and it comes to?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't catch.
So they could recommend approval. You still have to approve it because, because it's just a recommendation. They may recommend denial. You could overturn the recommendation if the subdivision engineer makes a good case for the, for the widening with, you know, with the backing of the city engineer, of course.
So will the city engineer also be in front of the commission?
He could, yes.
He could, or he will?
Yes, he will.
Okay.
Luis is always here.
Yeah. The, the, the other question is, once everything goes well, which that's what we're shooting for, and there is approval of the ditch being widened, okay, to reinforce the, 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 the tension because that's, that's going to be the big portion of the water overflow, correct? First, it's, hopefully the, the subdivision, the housing that's there will have enough or have lack of cement to where the water can actually hit the ground and, and go into the ground and then proceed toward, toward the widening of the ditch. That would be the ultimate goal. Secondly, who's going to be in charge of cleaning that and maintaining those, those ditches?
It depends on who owns the ditch. If it's a city ditch, it will be the city. If it's a drainage district ditch, it will be the, the drainage district.
So that will be addressed during the, the building phase?
Correct. But the developer will be responsible for the widening of that ditch? If it gets appro, if it gets approved.
And Luis will make the recommendation whether we should or should not prior to all of that and provide that information on if it's drainage district five or whoever has the ditch. And then if I understood correctly, you had mentioned that not always, just because there's a ditch, will it be the right path to take? And you would make that determination. Is that correct?
By the way, this was tabled, so we need, needs to be removed from the table.
I'll make the motion to remove from table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Or it's removed from the table.
Yes, removed from the table. So now we need a vote.
Do we have any other questions? No? Do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Consider, item number thirteen, consideration and possible action to accept the MOU between the Texas Music Office and the Office of the Governor and the City of Harlingen for maintenance of the Texas Music Industry Directory.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I am Cassandra, the Director of Visit Harlingen. I come to you so we can sign a MOU between the Texas Music Office and the City of Harlingen so we can become a certified music-friendly city. And this is one of the first of three steps that we need to take to be considered a music-friendly city. The second one will be to appoint a board, which we have spoken to other cities that have done this, and they pretty much appoint their CBB board to be the same board. So they have the same regular meetings and they're already familiar with what the CBB does. And the third step would be to have a workshop in the City of Harlingen with a representative of the Office of the Governor present. We could do it via Zoom as well. And we are shooting to do this all before Rio Fest so we can announce it at Rio Fest. And I would like to remind everybody, you can go to harlingenriofest.com to buy the tickets. It's very easy. On the top right-hand corner, you can buy it. But this is going to be great for the City of Harlingen, signing this and becoming a signed and music-friendly city. And we hope to continue this trend by then becoming a film-friendly city. And, you know, we'll continue to get friendly cities, all types of certifications, but this will be our first one.
So I'm super excited that you were able to do this so quickly. I didn't, I didn't realize that this was what, yeah, I feel like I was just on the phone with them and now you're here.
Yeah.
So that's wonderful. I do want to say one thing on the board. I think that it's good for the, for the CBB board, but I know that there are like artists in town, especially one specifically, that reached out to me wanting this for Harlingen because it's being done in other cities. And maybe the board needs to also include one or two local artists.
Yes, ma'am. We are, we're happy to look into that. Just, I guess, in efforts to move forward in a quicker fashion, that is why I recommended that, but we are open to doing it a different way.
If it could be done quickly, so it can be done before.
As long as you just give me the contact information, we can reach out and we're happy to get that settled.
Wonderful.
What's the cost to be part of this?
The cost to us is nothing.
Nothing.
Yeah. We do, we do, we do have to put on the, the workshops. So I think we'll provide like some light snacks and coffee for the.
No problem there.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Cassandra. Item fourteen, consideration and possible action to approve the budget for the Harlingen Convention Center for fiscal year 2023.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, as part of the agreement with BC Land, they are required to bring the, the budget for the Harlingen Convention Center once a year and have the City Commission approve it. Javier Segura and Keith Morgan are here from BC Land to present the, the budget.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners and City Managers. My name is Javier Segura. I'm the General Manager for the Harlingen Convention Center. And with me, I have our Corporate Director of Operations for BC Land, Keith Morgan. We are here before you today to submit our budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. But before I do that, I just wanted to do a quick recap of how we performed for fiscal year 2022. Total income was a million three seventy-two. Exceeded last year's budget by one million sixty-seven, the, the budget of one million sixty-seven by three hundred and five thousand, three fifty-five. This equates to a net income of one hundred and twenty thousand, three ninety-five. For fiscal year 2022, 2023, we are proposing a budget of one point five million with a net income of a hundred and six thousand. Proposal is an increase of half a million more from last year's budget. At this point, if you guys should have any questions for us, we're available.
The punchline is you all made money last year.
We did make money.
In your packet, there is a sheet before the budget. If you would just disregard that, that has no bearing on the item at hand. It got put in there by accident.
But yes, you're right, Commissioner. We made money.
How much of the, your revenues came from the contrast with the US government?
US government?
Border Patrol, military?
I don't have an exact number. If you're referring to MMA, which I don't think you are.
No, not.
That's, that's really just the hotel itself for the convention center. We made a few thousand dollars, but nothing glaring. Most of it really was at the HGI or the Hilton Garden Inn.
Got it. Got it. Got it confused.
We're good.
And what are you projected, you said, for next year, Javier?
One point five. That's about half a million dollars more than what we were budgeted last year. So we, we predict we will get there.
Does anybody have questions? I'll just say, I know that you've been working really, really hard and I've seen all the wonderful events that you've been doing at the convention center. I've tried to make as many as I, as I can. And I know that you've been really marketing, you and your team have been marketing the convention center. And I think that you will surpass your, your numbers in the next year because the word is getting around now that the convention center is available. So I think just, you know, congratulations to you for, I know it was difficult, I'm sure, through COVID. But moving forward, it seems that it's, you're booked pretty solid on the weekends, right?
So now, you know, thinking outside the box now to try to find different ways of making additional revenue, even if we do a double booking, you know, you know, reset and then do it all over again the same day. So we can make more revenue. But it's really the partnerships with, with the City of Harlingen and other city surrounding areas that we're going to be able to generate more revenue for the City of Harlingen. So.
And not everyone knows it here, but Javier does everything. Yesterday, was it yesterday?
Yes.
Yes. Yesterday, he was bartender and server and helping and yes, and marketing, even on days when he should be at home, I'm sure. So. Any other questions?
I'm excited for Wrestle Fest.
It's coming.
Yes.
What is that, Commissioner?
Tell us, Javier.
Oh, I'm doing a wrestle.
Oh, wrestle, okay.
At the convention.
Yeah.
Not, not.
Did you want to participate, Gabe?
No, no, no.
And, um, why don't you share a little bit about the boxing event that just, that just happened?
Sure. Um, we did a, uh, four-day boxing event. Uh, Thursday was the registration and then boxing on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Um, it did generate, uh, we don't have all the numbers in yet, but I, I will tell you this from just the food and beverage side and my room revenue, we generated thirty thousand dollars just at the convention center and at the, uh, hotel. Uh, that's not to account for the about a thousand room nights right now that I, that we can see that we spread throughout the city. So every hotel benefited, which is really the purpose of our convention center. Uh, sometimes we might not make money, but the purpose is for the city to make money and all the small business owners to get a little cut of that. Um, I know I walked in, I, I left to go to a restaurant real quick to grab a taco and I walked into that. In the restaurant, she recognized who I was and she was asking me what we were doing at the convention center and I said, oh, we're doing some, some boxing events, you know, it was four hundred and twenty boxers, uh, registered. And she goes, well, you know what? I saw a gentleman, I think he was a coach, that was a lot of kids. I said, yep, that was them. So I know that it was helping that, that business owner. And that's really what we want to do at the, at the convention center.
Did I, did I miss the Valley Morning Star coverage of this?
Yes.
Okay, okay. You didn't see it either.
No.
Okay.
It was a phenomenal event and, and maybe we can work on helping with, in that end with the, with the marketing, but I know that you did a great job with the marketing and the City of Harlingen pushed it as, as well. So it was wonderful. I did get the email with all the surrounding hotels and they all, like you said, benefited, and that's what we want. We want.
Exactly. Which was really nice to see, really. At the end of the day, that's what I wanted.
Yes.
Our next big event is going to be the Burning Festival coming up in a couple of weeks. That's going to be another, at the convention center.
And that will be on the Valley Morning Star.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Wonderful. Um, so do, if there's no other questions, do we have a motion? Do you have a question, Commissioner?
No.
No? Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution to appoint a city representative to the Cameron County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Um, Mayor, Members of the Commission, the, the city gets to appoint a representative to the Cameron County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Uh, the current appointee is David Argabright. Uh, that, that, uh, appointee serves through December thirty-first of this year. Uh, we can either reappoint him or come up with a new appointee. Uh, we don't have to do it tonight, but we do have to do it before December. Uh, I thought I'd put this on the agenda just to, uh, get the Commission thinking about what they want to do with this particular, uh, position.
Do you have a recommendation, Gabe?
Uh, no, ma'am. I, I didn't.
How long has that person been on the, on the, on that appraisal district?
Uh, I think this individual has served, uh, two terms, I believe, so four years, I think.
I'd recommend finding somebody so that way we can switch it around.
We, we can table this for now and I'll, I'll bring it back. I'll put it on the agenda for next, uh, next meeting to see if we've come up with somebody.
Sounds fine. Did I make a motion to table this item?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And so this item will be tabled. Item sixteen, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to prohibit parking in the parking lot adjacent to City Hall during certain hours and days with exemption, with exemptions for market days and city-related business.
Okay. Um, we sent an ordinance to your iPads today. Uh, we have been working on a, uh, ordinance that would prohibit, uh, and the reason we're doing this is because we've had numerous complaints from the neighbors that live adjacent to the parking lot regarding noise, uh, loud radios and cars revving their engines late at night. Uh, and so this ordinance would prohibit, um, parking after seven PM and before seven AM, Monday through Friday, would prohibit, uh, parking on weekends unless, unless it was related to city business. Uh, parking would be allowed after seven PM if there was a city event that those people were attending. Uh, it would also allow parking for farmer's market, uh, and any other city event that, that we had. Uh, so we are recommending, oh, and one of the, uh, one of the, one of the, uh, penalties for violating this ordinance is that on the first offense, they would receive a citation of two hundred and fifty dollars. The second violation, they would have, uh, a citation, not exceed four hundred dollars and their vehicle would be towed.
And so will there be appropriate signs warning all the party people?
Yes. We, we have to post signs on all the entrances to the park, to the parking lot. And this would be just the first reading. Uh, so we would have to, and the ordinance wouldn't go into effect until, uh, the signs were, but if it's approved tonight, we'll, we'll get working on ordering the signs, um, for that.
And this is also, um, we spoke with the chief, right? And, and it, and would help, I, I know there's been a lot of complaints about, um, speeding, uh, and, and cars congregating in that area and then speeding down.
He thinks this would help with, with, with racing also, uh, on, on weekends because they wouldn't be able to congregate here anymore.
Not have the staging area.
Yeah.
And they've been, I think that, and it also, um, takes away from the department having to go out there and tell them to move, uh, every weekend. And then this should free up so that way they can do, do the work that, that, that they're, you know, intended to do to keep the streets, uh, safe and serve the community and not waste time in, in this area.
That's, that's correct.
Do we have any other questions?
Anthony, is there a way we can edit this language, strike out farmer's market and include something a little broader? Say something like, city-approved, city-approved events, that's it. Just if we, for some reason, we have a different event there instead of having issues with the ordinance, just make it a little broader that the city just has to approve it. Obviously, farmer's market would be approved, but.
I don't have a problem with changing the language of that and modifying it. Uh, I think that if you're going to ask me to read it, I'll need a copy of it.
Okay. I'll get a copy. Uh, we do have an agreement with farmer's market to use that parking lot. That's why they were mentioned specifically. Uh, we don't have any other agreements for that, for the use of that parking lot except, except with them.
Yeah. You don't necessarily need the farmer's market language in there.
Okay.
As long as, like, I don't think you do, right, Anthony?
No, you doesn't have to say specifically.
I understand exactly why it was included, but what were you saying there?
And it's just in the evening, so like during the day, anyone can, can park there. So.
You just never know. I'd just like to give us, the city, a little more breathing room.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with Daniel.
Late time Easter, I hope.
Yeah, something wild, like, I don't know what it is, but.
We, we can do that, Commissioner. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, if you want to read the caption?
I, I do. An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter forty-six, Article four, stopping standing and parking, adding section forty-six through one sixty-seven, prohibiting parking after hours.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
So, just one second, I'm sorry. Do we need to do the motion to amend the language to be?
Well, actually, the language that I read is the language that was on the ordinance that was provided to me.
There still needs a second reading, so we'll make the changes for the second reading.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. I apologize.
Just vote on. Just vote on.
Aye. Thank you.
Opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen, consideration and possible action to approve a revocable license for use of property with the US Veterans Administration for use of the soccer complex parking lot on a temporary basis.
Uh, Mayor, Members of the Commission, I was approached by the VA Executive Director, Jomero Martinez. Uh, they asked if they could use a soccer complex parking lot. Uh, they asked for the, uh, the use of it through October twenty-first, but after meeting with them, I think we need to change that to November thirtieth. Uh, they've got issues with their parking garage that they want to address, and so they need to park their employees someplace else. Um, I told them that they could use a, the soccer parking lot, uh, unless we have a food drive, and we had one, uh, today, so they had to move to, uh, parking lot at, uh, at the community center, which is, uh, Monroe and, uh, First Street, pretty much. Uh, and so they're happy with that. Uh, I think we, we only have one food drive a month now, so, uh, that would not be an issue, and they would provide their own transportation from the parking lot to the VA and then from the VA back to the parking lot. So staff is recommending approval. Oh, and the city attorney did review the agreement and approve it, so.
Any discussion? Do you have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second that.
All those in.
And that'll be through November thirty.
Through November thirty, yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eighteen, discussion and first reading of ordinance redesigning the geographic boundaries of an enterprise zone pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter twenty-three oh-three, and a tax reinvestment zone pursuant to Texas Tax Code three twelve point two oh-four and three twelve point two eleven.
And which I know.
Eighteen.
Um, Mayor, Members of the Commission, those two agreements were sent to you today. Uh, I apologize, there was some miscommunication between the city attorney and the city secretary as, as to the documents, so they weren't sent to you in your packet, uh, last week. Uh, you do have them now, and I think Mark has spoken to Anthony about the, uh, uh.
That is correct.
The project, so if you could just address.
So, at this time, what we're going to do, or what the Commission can take up, is simply the first reading, uh, so that we can reestablish or, uh, make sure that we have the, the right status for the reinvestment zone and the taxing ability of it. And so that's the first one. And there's not going to be a public hearing on this one, but we'll have the public hearing at the next meeting. And so it's not going to be a consentogen item this time. Uh, when it comes back, you're going to actually have to have another reading at that time. And that way we can have the zone established, and then we can go ahead and vote and have the public hearing on the next item, which would be, uh, item nineteen.
So this item established an enterprise zone, uh, this is the ordinance to create that. Um, so you're saying that we have to have, uh, this item brought back at the, for the second, our reading and have a public hearing then?
Yes.
Okay.
But we need a motion now?
On this you do.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, the redistricting or the redesign of the geographic boundaries of this enterprise zone.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oh, wait. Do you need to read the?
Need to read the caption.
Caption, sorry.
I need to read the caption. And this would be redesignating the.
Jump gun here. I know you want to.
Redesignate the geographic boundaries of an enterprise zone pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter two-three zero-three, and reinvestment zone pursuant to Texas Tax Code, Section three-one-two-point-two-zero-four and Section three-one-two-point-two-one-one.
Make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item number nineteen, discussion in public hearing regarding voluntary annexation agreement and tax abatement agreement with SOG Properties LLC for a five-year tax abatement. But we're not having the public hearing.
No, we are having a public hearing.
We are. Right now?
Right now.
Okay. It's not on here, and, and I thought you had just said that it wasn't going to.
So eighteen, there was not a public hearing for that ordinance. That we can do at the next reading.
Okay.
On nineteen, we are having a public hearing, and at that, at this time, there is no action. We're simply going to have a public hearing on this issue.
Okay. On the annexation?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Is there any questions? No? Okay. So we're going to open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak for or against item number nineteen regarding the voluntary annexation, um, and tax abatement with SOG Properties?
Good afternoon, or good evening. Uh, Raúl Delgarza, CEO for Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. Um, I'm speaking in favor of the tax abatement agreement with SOG Properties on behalf of the Board of the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. Uh, several months ago, we had, um, the opportunity to get into an agreement, a development agreement with SOG Properties to develop a hundred and forty-two thousand square foot warehouse facility at the Harlingen Industrial Park. Um, this is the last piece of the puzzle in terms of the, um, incentive package that we offered to SOG. Right now, that property is within an industrial district, um, that Harlingen has, and what we are asking for is basically to change it from an industrial district into just an annexation, uh, voluntary annexation on behalf of us, the owners, uh, so that the new buyers of some of that property, uh, fifteen acres, can actually take advantage of, uh, the five-year tax abatement instead of a seven-year IDA industrial district agreement. And on, and while doing so, the city has more control of what happens to that property if it gets, uh, changed of ownership in the future. Um, and therefore, uh, a better control of, instead of a pilot agreement, um, the tax abatement agreement would be a lot smoother. Um, what, you're not giving up anything because you don't have anything. It's giving up what you don't have and what you won't get unless you get into this type of agreement. And so, uh, this is a win for everybody, um, because once you have a hundred and forty-two thousand square feet, then there's something there to market, uh, in addition to some of the, other spaces that we have in the, in, in the, in the building, in, in the city. We need more space so that we can attract more jobs and more investment, and this is a good way of doing it. That's my.
Where specifically is this property?
It is, uh, the backside of sixty-acre tract that is owned by the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation off, uh, the cul-de-sac on Industrial Way. So if you take Industrial Way off of Grimes all the way to the cul-de-sac, that's the fifteen acres back there. So on the front side, if you go towards the east, is five oh-nine. So it's, uh, west of five oh-nine and south of Grimes.
And what it, what are they planning to build? Or?
A spec building, a one hundred and forty-two thousand square foot spec building so that we can attract companies and jobs.
And who's this SOG?
SOG is, uh, a partnership, uh, that includes Joaquin Spammer, CIL Logistics, um, Luis Arial, Luis Campos and Wayne Lowry.
I think Wayne Lowry is no longer, isn't that right?
He is basically out of the picture from my understanding.
And the tax abatement is contingent upon them building, is that, is that right?
Yeah.
And if they don't build, what happens?
They don't build, then, um, first of all, there's milestones in the development agreement that they must build within a year of, of, of starting construction, or they must finish within a year of starting construction. And if they don't start, if they don't finish a building, then it voids out the development a building, then it voids out the development agreement and it voids out the tax abatement.
And year six, we start with the, or each year you mentioned.
Yeah. And so the first year, there's probably real small valuation because it's under construction. And that's the year that you give them 100% of the tax abatement. The second year, as they complete, hopefully they complete the, the building, then they're being, they, they have 100% of the building done, but 80% of that is going to be abated. And then after that, you're at 60, 40, and then 20%. And by year six, you're at 100% of, uh, value being taxed. Now, what are you giving up? Again, you're not giving up anything because you don't have anything to give up. So if they build, you get something in, in exchange. And we do continue to get over the five years about $148,000 in, in taxes. Uh, after that, based on what they tell us is the value of the building, you'll be getting about a quarter million dollars every, every, every five years. So we're, if you want to put a number to what, what it's really costing us, it's about $20,000 a year for an eight-million-dollar investment.
Sounds like a good investment.
Thank you, Adelle.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak for or against? Okay, well then we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
There's no action.
There's no action on this.
No action, sorry.
On this item. We have to have the other one put in place.
We just got excited. We're ready to go.
I get it. I've been there tonight.
Okay. Item 20, do we have any board appointments?
Yes, ma'am. I have a few. Uh, reappoint Michael Mesmar to TERS Boards 1, 2 and 3. Uh, reappoint Cesar Perez and Robert Garza to the zoning board of adjustments. And reappoint Joe Ray Wagner to the construction board of adjustments and appeals.
Dana?
No.
I reappoint Eric Ziehe to TERS 1, 2 and 3.
None.
Reading?
I would just also ask that, um, I know some of you already did, but if you get a chance to go ahead and, um, appoint somebody, when you get the opportunity next meeting to the, the youth advisory board, I know the schools, I've reached out to the schools and they've already appointed, most of the high schools have already appointed somebody. I've appointed someone, I think you pointed someone, right, Ford?
Yes.
So, um, there, we just need your guys' appointments. So whenever you get a chance, please. And no, I don't have anybody right now.
Tell us the age.
Seven, uh, 18 and up. 18 to, was it 24?
24.
Yes, 18, 24. They can be 17, but they have to be the, um, the president of student council.
18 to 24.
For either high school.
That one's not on my list, right?
Right.
No.
That's what, and it's just one?
Yes, just one person.
Okay. I have someone in mind, but I'll, next meeting. Yes, any, is there any others? No? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the board appointments?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Um, item 21 is executive session. Uh, there is, item 21, executive closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, regarding the purchase, lease or value of real estate if the deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city of Harlingen in negotiations with a third person regarding some of the following projects in Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, regarding commercial and financial information for business prospects with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations and/or to discuss or deliberate financial or other incentives relating to the following projects from the EDC, Project Shrimp, Project Surfboard and Project Root Beer. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 7:42. We will be going into executive session and we'll be out shortly, hopefully. The time is now 8:07. Um, and we are out of executive session and moving on to item number 22. Do we have a motion to approve, um, Project Shrimp, Project Surfboard and Project Root Beer as discussed in executive session?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. And that concludes our meeting. We adjourn. Thank you.